All right, I'm going to call the meeting to order at 4:00. Roll call. Trustee Wigan.
Here.
Trustee Soylu.
Here.
Trustee Murphy.
Here.
Trustee Pearson.
Here.
Trustee Anderson.
Here.
Trustee Crane.
Here.
Dr. Smith.
Here.
All right, let's go to adoption of the agenda. Do I have a motion?
Still moved.
Second. Second by Pearson. Okay. Moved by trustee Crane, seconded by trustee Pearson. Roll call vote. Trustee Wigan.
Yes.
Trustee Soylu.
Yes.
Trustee Murphy.
Yes.
Trustee Pearson.
Yes.
Trustee Anderson.
Yes.
Trustee Crane.
Yes.
All right, motion carries. 6-0. Do we have any community input on closed items? Closed agenda items? Okay, perfect. Seeing we don't have any, we will now move to closed session. The items are A, employee evaluation superintendent; B, public employee discipline dismissal release employment 2021 HR; public employee discipline dismissal release employment 2024 11 HR; D, conference with labor negotiator; E, public employee discipline dismissal release; F, public employee discipline dismissal release employment 2024 12; public employee discipline dismissal release employment 2024 13. We will return to open session at 6:00 PM. Okay, I'm going to call the meeting to order at 6:02 PM. And we are... We have four readouts from our closed session. The first readout is, in closed session, the Board of Education took action to approve the employment agreement number 202410HR. The roll call vote was six ayes, zero noes. The next one is, in closed session, the Board of Education took action to approve the dismissal of classified employee 202411 HR effective June 24, 2025. The roll call vote was six ayes, zero noes. And then, in closed session, the Board of Education took action to approve the resignation agreement and general release number 202412. The roll call vote was as follows, six ayes, zero noes. And finally, in closed session, the Board of Education took action to approve the resignation agreement and general release number 202413. The roll call vote was six ayes, zero noes. All right, with that, now we're going to have opening ceremonies with a moment of reflection and pledge of allegiance led by Lisa Pearson.
Please stand. Right hand over your heart, ready to get.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, do I have a motion for the adoption of the minutes from our meeting on June 10, 2024?
Still moved.
A second.
Moved by trustee Crane, seconded by trustee Pearson. Roll call vote. Trustee Wigan.
Yes.
Trustee Soylu. Trustee Murphy.
Yes.
Trustee Pearson.
Yes.
Trustee Anderson.
Yes.
Trustee Crane.
Yes.
The vote was 6-0. Okay, now moving on to a very special part of our... Of our meeting tonight, and it's a bittersweet one. We're going to move into our recognitions, which sometimes can be exciting, and this is exciting as well, but also bittersweet, so. 10A, Dr. Smith.
Yes, recommended the Board of Education adopt resolution number 220625, resolution 230625, distinguished service award to Leona Olson and Jeff Trader in honor of their exemplary years of service to the Newport Mesa Unified School District. And to test my literacy skills, I will read these resolutions with all of their wherlasses. Whereas Leona Olson has served the Newport Mesa Unified School District for almost 10 years, beginning in 2015 as director of certificated and then serving as assistant superintendent, chief human resource officer; and whereas Leona Olson is a highly respected leader in the Southern California and Orange County Human Resources Administrator Consortium and is well-known for her exemplary technical knowledge, strong ethics, and high standards; and whereas Leona Olson provided skillful leadership during the COVID-19 pandemic, including negotiating multiple agreements with MUSD's labor unions and overseeing and operationalizing the district's health and safety guidelines, COVID-19 reporting, and employee accommodation, leaves, and coverages; and whereas Leona Olson has been instrumental in fostering and retaining strong collaborative relationships with both classified and certificated labor partners, ensuring mutual respect and shared goals; and whereas Leona Olson has led the Human Resources Department through significant changes that improved operational efficiency and responsiveness, enhancing the overall experience for employees and applicants alike; and whereas Leona Olson has consistently promoted open and transparent dialogue between all groups, creating space for understanding diverse perspectives and thoughtfully addressing challenges; and whereas her leadership has exemplified professionalism, integrity, and commitment to equity and service, earning Leona Olson the respect and admiration of colleagues throughout the district. Now, therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education, the Newport Mesa Unified School District, presents Leona Olson with Newport Mesa Unified School District's distinguished service award for her outstanding contributions to the district and that by this proclamation, Leona Olson will carry with her the best wishes of the Board of Education and of the district for continued happiness and great success in future endeavors. And now, the resolution for Jeff Trader. Whereas Jeffrey Trader has served the Newport Mesa Unified School District from 2022-25 as assistant superintendent, chief business official in addition to 25 years of service as the director of fiscal services; and whereas during his 28-year tenure in school business services, Jeffrey Trader has served with the highest of standards, known for his integrity, work ethic, leadership, dedication, compassion; and whereas Jeffrey Trader has been the quintessential example of a stellar school business official with a deep fiscal knowledge base, well-developed statewide resources, and a calm, steady leadership style, and was the integral part of bringing Newport Mesa Unified School District through the pandemic in sound financial status; and whereas Jeffrey Trader has given unselfishly of his time assistance through service to many educational organizations and committees, serving as the Eastern Section President of the California Association of School Business Officials; and whereas Jeffrey Trader has fully supported the numerous modernization and improvements of school facilities through the district that enhanced the learning environment for all students; and whereas Jeffrey Trader wholeheartedly embraces his local community through his support of parent-teacher associations and other school-connected organizations; and whereas, as a result of the exemplary contributions of Jeffrey Trader and his dedication and honorable service to the Newport Mesa Unified School District, the students, families, staff, and the community, and the Board of Education have greatly benefited. Now, therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Newport Mesa Unified School District presents Jeffrey Trader with the Newport Mesa Unified School District's distinguished service award for his outstanding contributions to the district and that by this proclamation, Jeffrey Trader will carry with him the best wishes of the Board of Education and of the district for continued happiness and great success in his future endeavors.
Now, we have to adopt that resolution, so there is a vote. Can't believe we need to vote on this, because I'm sure it's unanimous, but let's vote. Oh, we... Excuse me, we need a motion.
Still moved. For both of them or just one?
For both and then a second. Moved by trustee Crane, seconded by trustee Anderson. Trustee Wigan.
Yes.
Trustee Soylu.
Yes.
Trustee Murphy.
Yes.
Trustee Pearson.
Yes.
Trustee Anderson.
Yes.
Trustee Crane.
Yes.
You will get these lovely printouts soon, but now we're moving on to 10B, which is the Board Distinguished Service Award to Leona Olson. So this is our time to... For Leona and to really tell her everything that, you know, we have... All the great things that she has done for our district, but also to just show her a lot of love from our board. But first, if you want to talk about the distinguished service award in general?
Yes, the opportunity the Board has to identify distinguished service for the district. And that comes with it the wonderful resolution that they just passed, which we will frame for you, and your name will hang on a plaque here in the district for as long as the board room is here. So that's how we'll honor you with that.
So, every day, we, you know, for all our board meetings, we look at these lovely plaques down there, and we're not really sure what they say, because we can't read it from here. But, you know, I was here or came on the board when the first two folk... Or the two folks before you were on... Were received one of these awards. And, you know, they were in the district for 30, 28 years, 18 years. So your names are going up there with some really wonderful people on that list. But what I have to say is, without getting teary, because I do when I feel appreciation, but... Okay, let's get through this. So when I started, it was COVID, and I think we only saw you guys from the nose up. And so, you know, probably a year into that, we really got to know each other a lot better. But from everything that I was able to see and witness, your level of professionalism, your level of care for all the employees, care for the board, but also just wanting to do the right thing for our students, which was... It's just really awesome to see, especially when you have students at the district. So thank you. I wish I was a little bit more professional with this speech, but anyway. I wanted to echo a couple of things in your wherasses. But your professionalism, your respect, your integrity, the way that you have handled yourself during not only one of the hardest crises for any HR, which was COVID-19, but then also through negotiations, dealing with difficult situations with employees, but always keeping the students as your North Star. We can't thank you enough, and we know you've come to this level by being in the classroom first, and that is... That's always a wonderful thing to have that perspective. So with that being said, I'm going to open it up for a little bit more comments from the board, if you guys have them. Yeah, whatever, whoever wants to start.
None of us want to speak, because none of us want to cry. Leona, I'm... We're going to miss... I'm going to miss having you just in this room for the board meetings. You are classy, you are intelligent. I have learned so much from you, and we are going to... We are going to... We're going to miss you. Thank you.
And you can go, Leah.
You are so amazing. All of the things that Krista said are definitely true. I really always appreciated your Canadian maple snacks. They remind me of home, and it always made my day. And you personally just went above and beyond when I injured my back to get me signed up onto insurance in like 24 hours. So, yeah, just, I will be eternally grateful. You are just an amazing human, and I wish you the best in whatever you get to go do next for fun.
Ditto, ditto, ditto. I think the last meeting, I cried more, so I don't know. I'm not... I'm like, I'm hoping that I won't cry as much this time, though Krista was making me feel teary, because she's right and Leah's right. It's just always been reassuring for me to look over at you and know that you were... You weren't panicking. And everything was going to be okay, and we would work it out, and we would work it through, and it would be for the best of all concerned. So I just appreciate that about you, and I'm jealous about wherever you're going next. It sounds amazing. And I just hope we're able to occasionally, you know, call on you for, you know, emergencies if needed, because your wisdom is very much appreciated on this board and with all of us. Thank you.
I would just say, the thing that has stood out to me the most is your ability to maintain ongoing relationships. I have people that come up to me at graduations, whenever I'm in the community, saying how much it meant to them, because either a family member who was a teacher or a staff member of ours had passed away, and they received a personalized note from you, or you had called to check on a family member or somebody who was ill or injured. I think that's super rare in any context, but to have that particularly... That personal connection and care and compassion is extremely rare and unique. So thank you so much for providing that, and we hope that you... I know your first thing is to go and be with your mother and be with your family, so just thank you for leading with your heart.
Leona, I had the pleasure of being at your event yesterday, and it was so evident by your team how much you respected, and your integrity is unquestionable. But with a one comment that stuck with me is that how your car is usually the last one in the parking lot. Okay, that right there, that's a symbol of your dedication. And I... How lucky are we that we get to have assistant superintendents who are so dedicated that they will stay as long as needed for the kids of Newport Mesa and the staff? And, you know, you're a champion and a warrior, because you've also had, you know, through COVID, you... It was amazing. I remember, you know, the fact that we needed subs, and you do whatever you could to try to get us subs so we can cover in the classroom, and just it was the superhuman efforts that were... That kind of pretty much defined who you were. And us, again, some of us, we were the pledge class of COVID. We got in. We got on a dais, and it was like, okay, we got COVID. So you're definitely, again, a champion for us, and you truly were... Saved our district in many ways, and we appreciate you. And you... We can't wait. Have fun, you know, enjoy. You certainly earned it. And I know you'll miss being a part of this district in the sense that it's... You've been an educator for many years, and it's just part of your DNA. But I think you also deserve to just move beyond and just enjoy yourself, so thank you.
And with that, let's present to you the plaque, and we can take a lovely picture with us all. To Leona. All right, then on to our next. So C is our Board's Distinguished Service Award to Jeffrey Trader. Do you want to say what you said? Okay, same thing. So Jeff, as we commonly know him, Mr. Trader. There has been... Whenever you think things are going wrong and you hear about something going wrong or you have a question, Jeff's like this encyclopedia of knowledge that he knows, no, I got this, no, I know this, I have this, let me go find it. He's always willing to help. He... When I first started, he was over finance, and then he took over maintenance and operation in all of our facilities. And that is no strong little feat. So not only were you in finance, which is a huge undertaking, see the budget book right there in front of you, but also then to take over facilities. And especially when I walked a site with you... God, this is just ridiculous, but I mean, it was just a baseball field. But I walked a site with you, and you looked at the baseball field at once, and you said, how did we let it get like this? We... These... Our kids deserve better. Our kids deserve better. And when you said that, you were like... Your real intent, I think you got on your phone, and you're looking around, and you were just like, you know... You might be a baseball expert, I'm not sure, but at that day, you really wanted to give us the... All the quality facilities that our students deserve. So I saw your dedication to NMUSD, and while you've been with our district for a long time, and I've been lucky enough to be a part of this for five years now, we're definitely going to miss you, and we're going to miss your sense of humor. I don't know who else can make numbers exciting and funny, but you do. And so maybe there's, you know, maybe you can tutor some in the next life to make people love math and love finance. We'd also like to know where that gold jacket is going to be that you use at the PTA recognition awards. But Jeff, you know, the person coming after you has some huge shoes to fill, and we're just so grateful that you were able to bless us with your presence for so long, so thank you. And we'll go down the list. Leah.
I like that, putting order to the madness. Thank you. Yes, Mr. Trader, you are just... I just feel like every time we get to talk to you, we get smarter, like by osmosis. You just are a wealth of so much knowledge about this district, and, you know, whenever we'd hear interesting things out in the community and we think, huh, is that actually true? You know, we'd go ask you, and it's like, nope, that's actually not true. Jeff knows the history, the details, the math. It was just always so wonderful to be able to talk to you. And I was kind of hoping that the gold jacket would be like, put in a frame on the wall. If we can make that happen, that would be great. But enjoy your next adventure, and you get to relax, and you don't have to carry all those heavy binders around. So it's been just a pleasure to get to know you. Thank you so much for your service.
Same, ditto, ditto. Jeff, I just love how you present information. I don't know if anyone's paid attention to it, but I love how you explain some very complicated scenarios to us in a way that not only the board can understand, but the public can understand. And so I think you make... I think for our students, you might even make finance seem, you know, fun or maybe something that they might want to do for their careers, so, or, you know, focus on in college or what have you. So you're just an inspiration in that way, I think, in terms of making finance and numbers and the math seem like something we can all understand and something that we can all do. So it's definitely your strong suit, and so I will miss that. I will miss asking about if the '70s Lincoln is going to ever be like an '80s Mazda? Or is it going to become like a... Are we going to get to Tesla? I mean, like, where are we going with this? And so I will just... I just will really miss you and miss your calm presence when we have a lot of questions and we are not sure which way to go. And you always help us in terms of making the best decision for the district and for our staff, our teachers, and our students, so. And for leaving us in such a great position, so we appreciate that. I appreciate you.
Like Krista, I was wowed yesterday. I had the privilege of walking Anderson Elementary School with Jeff, and there's a lot of remodeling going on there, and he made it happen. And I think I was shocked at how amazing he's making the school safe, he's making these classrooms so these kids can learn in the next decades, and thank you. Thank you for doing that. I also have to say, I was at your retirement party, and the love in that room was amazing, not only by all your coworkers, but also by your family. And I'd be bawling right now, but to see your beautiful family up there all fly in to say goodbye to you and those beautiful grandchildren, I know that you're going off to do wonderful things, so congratulations.
I want to say thank you. You, I think, have recreated what this role has been in our district. In the past, you know, it was really hard to get information. It was specifically difficult for financial impacts to our students. And so I just... I'm so thankful for you the second that you were placed into this position, and even before, you were an open-door, open-book type of person, which is so important. And I think the fact that within each of our budgets, you continue to put those reminders and those quotes that a budget is where your value... Reflects what your values are, and it's very evident to everyone who reads through that, that you are not just doing finances. You didn't just step into doing all of the maintenance operations, all of risk management, all of those. You are really an educator as well. The ideas and the creativity that you presented to close the opportunity gap are things that are huge. We have field trips now, we have science camp, we have educational enhancements from the Irvine Foundation. Those were your ideas and recommendations, and so I just thank you for the time that you spent particularly with me. I asked, what are some things we could do? And you always had these great ideas. And similarly, you came to Wilson, you saw the roofs, you saw the carpets. We've never had someone in that role who did a site visit before with me. And so I just thank you so much for your contribution and the difference that you have truly made.
Jeff, a $465 million budget is pretty large, and we need to have someone who we can trust and who's transparent, because we're not, you know, all MBAs like Krista Wigan, for example. You know, I'm a teacher, so, you know, we need to have, again, these... A stalwart that can keep us safe and be a steward of our funds. And when we ask questions, we get honest answers, and I think this is the biggest quality that I appreciate in you. And of the fact that you also are a pretty good comedian, actually. And so I hope you do do some stand-up when you're done. You're welcome to join Gary, anytime. So anyway, it's also your quiet... It's like you're a gentle giant, you know? Your work is so big, but you don't boast, you just do the work, and then... And you are so relational with us, and you don't judge. We ask tough questions, we ask easy questions. It's like no question is a bad question. So for that, I've appreciated your wisdom, your relational skills, and also, of course, your knowledge, because money's tricky. We are a public organization, and we need to have someone we trust, someone who's transparent, to be at the helm of that, and you are... Have been exemplary, and we appreciate you for that.
Well, thank you, Jeff. Now it's time for your plaque. Congratulations. Well, thank you. That was a great moment and we will meet your replacements at the next board reading, board meeting. So stay tuned. Okay, now we're on to 11, CSEA and NMFT president's comments. First up, we have CSEA President Amy Ching. Oh, no comments from them, sorry. NMFT President Rhonda Reed.
Good evening, President Wagen. Oops, sorry. Trustees, Superintendent Dr. Smith, Cabinet, guests here tonight, including NMFT and Newport Harbor. I wanted to congratulate again, Leona Olson and Jeff Trader. You both are so appreciated and you will be missed by many throughout the district, for sure. It will be a big change, losing two exceptionally skilled, accomplished professionals. I wanted to share some changes with NMFT. We had officer elections in spring. So Tamara Fairbanks, and will you stand when I say your name? She was reelected as treasurer. Laura Mayberry was reelected as VP of High Schools. She's not here tonight because she is in hospital with her two-day-old newborn. Yes. Scott Tarnow was elected as our new NMFT first VP. We also have Jo Marie Hayes here tonight and she is elected for VP of Middle School. We also in spring, spring was a busy month for us. We hired a new executive director, Tonya Golden. She comes with a wealth of experience. I will also mention, mention style and class. She is a retired teacher from ABC Unified School District and has been involved in, with their union for over two decades, holding many positions. She was also on CFT's TK-12 Council for 10 years, creating and lobbying legislation to benefit districts across the state. There's also a change for me as well. I was elected in March to CFT's Executive Council, Council as Vice President. So I'm really looking forward to not only being involved with our local as president, the Orange County Labor Fed, and now also at the state level. We had our last negotiation date on Monday and we unfortunately, sadly, will not finish this cycle with Leona Olson, as we had hoped. During these negotiations, we have really delved into analyzing data and information from our district, the county and the state. This allows us to have a more comprehensive understanding of all the information so we can be accurate and transparent as we work towards the benefit of our members. I hope you can continue to confirm your commitment to our educators for their worth, their value and their commitment, that you will show them that you also truly believe that they are the best educators in the Orange County and they are deserving to be number one in all areas, including salaries. Thank you.
Okay, number 12 is our community input on non-agendized items. Trustee Murphy?
Yeah. Just going to sit back and relax there for a sec. This is an opportunity for the public to address the board regarding items not on the regular meeting agenda. Comments on the non-agenda topics are limited to three minutes per comment, up to 20 minutes per topic. A speaker may not relinquish his, her time to another person. By order of the Brown Act, Section 54954 dot 2, the board will take no action nor have any discussion on non-agendized items. The superintendent may provide clarification during superintendent's comments.
Okay, so we have two topics that people put cards in for and we have, you know, since we have the 20-minute limit per topic, we have, for the first topic and, and the second topic, actually, we're going to limit the speaker's time to two minutes and 45 seconds so that we can get everyone in that wants to speak. So I don't want to limit someone that would like to speak, so we'll just cut down your time to two minute and four, two minutes and 45 seconds and that'll be noted there on the, on the countdown clock. So for the first person up to speak, Gary Robinson.
Good evening, Superintendent and Board of Trustees. I'm Gary Robinson. I have been a 20-year teacher at Newport Harbor High School and I'm here to talk about our wonderful IB program, actually started by my dad, who had taught at the high school for over 50 years. I'm, I'm honored to carry on the tradition in what he, he laid, has a great foundation, continue to grow the, the program. Why I love the IB program so much is that it allows students to go beyond what normal ramifications are in the classroom. I get to sit back and basically just let the brilliance of students come through. They are allowed to go to foreign countries to go to college. That is something that is not usually offered to most of our students. They are able to develop as enquirers and, and real critical thinkers. I teach history and it's not just me spouting facts at them, it's them becoming actual historians where they, they dive into primary and secondary sources and become these amazing thinkers right in front of my eyes. I get to sit back and go, wow, I'm a great teacher because they get to do all this great stuff, but they just show their brilliance every day. They do research papers in my class and I learn so much every year because they can pick any topic they want. And I love reading their papers because it's stuff that, of course, I don't know everything. I'm just a teacher that teaches a certain topic, but they cover all these things and it's just mind-boggling to see how, the, the potential these students have and the program allows them to really develop as much as possible. And it gives them a real worldview that I think is really important for students to have, not just be told information, but to develop their own worldview about where, where they, they lie in the world and where they want to go. I have three kids of my own who will be at Newport Harbor very shortly and I'm very honored and proud that they will have the opportunity to be a part of this IB program. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next up, Alma DiGiorgio.
Hello, my name is Alma DiGiorgio. I'm the IB Diploma Coordinator at Newport Harbor High School. I also teach IB Spanish. Members of the board, thank you so much for this opportunity to allow me to speak about this program that not only shapes student intellect, but transforms our school culture, the International Baccalaureate Diploma Program. Let me be clear that the IB is not just harder classes. It's not just a string of courses with extra homework. It's a globally benchmarked two-year academic system that requires students to commit their sophomore year, so we're talking age 15, to something deeper, more demanding and far more comprehensive than anything else offered in high school. IB Diploma candidates don't get to pick and choose a few challenging courses. They commit to an all or nothing system. If they miss a requirement, an internal assessment, a reflection, a CAS project or the extended essay, they fail the entire diploma. This is academic jenga. Every piece matters. This two-year journey builds grit, it builds time management, it builds intellectual humility and most importantly, it builds character. When a student chooses IB, they're not just chasing college credit, they're choosing to grow, to think and to see beyond themselves. The payoff is extraordinary. IB Teachers teaches students to consider different worldviews, not just as an exercise in empathy, but as a core part of learning. Whether it's in theory of knowledge, IB language, science or history, students must engage with multiple perspectives and question how we know what we actually know. This produces graduates who don't just, don't just perform well, but they lead well. The IB Diploma is recognized over 150 countries. That global recognition has made Newport Harbor High School a destination. Families from Germany, Italy, France, Spain, the Netherlands, Venezuela and the UK have moved to our school district specifically for this program. That cultural diversity enriches our campus and expands every student's learning experience and not just those enrolled in IB. The IB takes Newport Harbor High School from being a strong local school to being a globally recognized institution. And that lifts our entire school district. It signals to colleges, communities and the world that we offer a world-class education. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next up, we have Jasper Michelson.
Hello, my name is Jasper Michelson. I live in Costa Mesa. Dear Board and Trustees, I'd like to state my strong support and excitement about the IB program at Newport Harbor High School. When my wife and I moved to Newport Beach, Costa Mesa, from Denmark four years ago, we researched the school systems in the area and having access to the IB program at, in, in high school was one of the key factors for us choosing to live in this, to live in this district. My oldest son graduated with an IB Diploma on June 5th from Newport Harbor. It made me very proud, our family very proud, and not the least, my son very proud. I find the IB program excellent in many ways. Here's just a few examples. The structure and the design of the program provides for strong individual student involvement. This in turn creates a desire for the students to learn and deep dive into new topics. For the program, having built-in individual research and individual papers ignite the students' passion and allows them to pursue their individual interests. The Theory of Knowledge class provide, as another example, the Theory of Knowledge class provides students with a great platform to analyze and discuss and debate key aspects of life, critical thinking, what is learning. Having evening classes twice a week and a heavy student input to the schedule also allows a student to nurture a different mindset, a new way to connect with their classmates, a different way to use the school buildings and just feel in control of the journey. My son always came home full of energy and inspiration after these TOK evening classes. They created a good basis for many great dinnertime discussions in our house. Lastly, the IB program also has this Theory of Knowledge exhibition, which I hope you get a chance to go visit next year because it really shows the students' deep desire for researching a project or a topic that they have decided, found and, and decided on themselves. Being in the audience two years ago, I found all the students' projects very inspiring and the students were highly motivated to discuss the topics afterwards. What a great evening. I wish all high school students tried something like this and it really creates a great way to jump into college. So in, in short, thank you for offering that program, the IB program, to high school students in this district. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Matt Armstrong.
President Wagen, trustees of the board, Superintendent Smith and NMUSD Administration, thank you for your service. I'm Matt Armstrong. I'm here tonight as the Assistant Department Chair of English at Newport Harbor. And the good news I have is right along with the Diploma Program, but a little bit more widespread, and that is that the Newport Harbor English Department has like completely flipped the makeup of their college-level classes since incorporating IB into our curriculum. In 2016 to 17, one-third of our 12th, 11th and 12th grade students were in honors-level English with two-thirds on our comp lit track. A decade later, our projections for next year show 65% of our juniors and seniors in IB higher-level courses. We've doubled the population of students in these courses. And there's a long history behind this result, including some really creative and bold initiatives. There was a good deal of dissent and hand-wringing, some of which was my own. NHHS English Department, it's not known for its passivity. And since we've had the ball rolling, there's been a decade-long regimen of hard work and concerted effort on the part of our teachers. And the bottom line is this, that we're now serving twice as many students in these honors-level courses as we once did. And this translates to thousands of students engaging in richer, more rigorous content than they otherwise would have and achieving more rewarding results in the form of college credit. I can't point to any equivalent success in any other school or department in my 25 years of experience. And when I ask other teachers or administrators if they know of anything like this, they cannot recall any equivalent success. We've also done this with increased subgroup representation in these courses and our test scores have remained steady. And furthermore, students in the English Department at NHHS have two opportunities to earn college credit, once at the end of sophomore year with the AP test and then again at the end of senior year in the IB exam. Our success is also represented by our state test scores, which at Newport Harbor last summer 2014 earned an elite rating of blue on the California Schools Report Card, which is above green, which I didn't even know could happen until it happened. So our success in the English Department is not just some chance occurrence. Greatness is the result of inspired leadership and the concerted effort of seasoned professionals. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next up, Katerina Schmidt.
Hello, Board of Trustees. My name is Katerina Schmidt. I'm the mother of two boys, one of which has finished his junior year in the IB Diploma Program and the other one is going to start his IB Diploma Program in the junior year. I was born in Germany, my husband was born in the Netherlands. When we moved to the States in 2017, it was obvious we're going to do IB because we want to have the option of potentially studying elsewhere than the States. And there's like, there's few, many things and many people said wonderful things about it. There's one thing that I would like to point out, which is the focus on critical thinking. I think we live in a time in which that is really, really important. And, and one way to do that is the, the Theory of Knowledge class that they take in the evening, some people talked about it. Mr. Armstrong leads it at our class and it culminates in the, the exhibition that Jasper talked about. And it's, it was really amazing. There is a student over there who presented how the students reflected and presented on their thinking about thinking. And it was even topics that are super polarized, like politics, they were so well thought through and, and so eloquent. And they're, they had really done some good thinking about their own thinking around topics that are controversial. That's one thing. The other thing, so my kids have gone through various schools and, and various IB programs. And one thing in our, in our house is integrity is, dot, 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 doing the right thing when nobody's watching. And that is one of the things that's really being repeated and, and being inquired about in the IB program. And I think it's, it's phenomenal that they get in touch with that. So I'm, I'm a big fan. I think we should promote it a little bit more. The students tell each other, it's very, very hard, it makes your life miserable. It doesn't. It really makes for a better life in the long run. And, and I think we can do hard things and hard things are good for us. So we need to, I think our school needs to think about how to promote it better. Thank you.
Thank you. Samantha Villard.
Hi, I'm Samantha Villard. I'm currently in my senior year at Newport Harbor High School and I'm in the IB program. This has been one of the best decisions I've made in my high school career was joining this program. Not only has it given me some of my closest friends, because we all share the same passion of wanting to further our academic because we all share the same passion of wanting to further our academic success, but we've also gone to talk about topics that I don't think anyone else on campus would think to even discuss. The class Theory of Knowledge has been one of my favorite classes I've taken. Although the night aspect of it was a little hard to get used to, it was actually the best part of my days when I went. I got to have an open format discussion with my classmates and we talked about subjects that were part of the curriculum in the class. And then we also got onto really fun off-topic topics within that realm. And this has just really opened my thinking and ability to think about the world differently and just how everything that you think about or don't think about has an impact on the world around us. One of my favorite parts of this class was the exhibition. This, like the class allowed us to prepare for it all of the semester. And I got to pick a question that I was really interested in, which was how are material tools like helping the acquisition and production of knowledge? And the objects I picked were really interesting to me because they were all personal things that I use or do in my daily life. And I got to share some of my passions to my classmates and teachers who were there. And I got to explain how a passion of mine, sailing, can relate to the IB curriculum. You wouldn't think that a sport could be related to a class you take, but it's like intertwined and it teaches you to think of everything and everything you do as a part of the class. And the exhibition was a great way for me to practice public speaking and then also write about something I'm passionate about. And I think that more students should be involved in the program. I think everyone says it's super hard, but I honestly don't think it's that hard. I think it's just, it helps you improve your time management, which is really important. I was also able to take classes that I would have taken anyways, but it just allowed me to take classes such as Theory of Knowledge that I wouldn't have had the opportunity to take without the IB program. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, London Jurczik.
Hello, my name is London Jurczak and I am a recent graduate of Newport Harbor's IB class of 2025. Not only is IB a rigorous program, which requires hours of dedication to any student participating, but it is also one of the best college preparatory programs there is to offer. Along with my extended essay, which was a four-thousand-word independent research project, in every one of my IB classes, I was required to complete an independent assessment about a topic that interested me. I think this is important with the IB program because these assignments have taught me and prepared me for college, a time and place that is notorious for long research papers and independent assignments. This is something that I have not experienced in any of my other AP or regular classes. Instead of teaching kids to pass the test, which is how many AP classes work, our IB classes teach us to think critically, apply, apply our knowledge to areas of passion and learn skills that we will bring to college and in the future. The IB program also requires students to take Theory of Knowledge, which for us was a two-hour night class twice a week. It is one of the best classes Newport Harbor has to offer. This seminar, led by Mr. Armstrong, allowed my peers and I to critically think about what is knowledge and how we know what we know. It also allowed for us to question what we believe and what we accept in society. The entire practice of this class allowed me to become more open-minded and receptive to concepts and ideas which may have gone against my previous beliefs. I would also like to note about the great community the IB program builds at Newport Harbor. My class was extremely small with only about five people. And this allowed my fellow IB classmates and I to become really close. We bonded in classes, which there was only six to seven of us, and we were able to work very closely with teachers, which made learning more fun and easy. Additionally, we all came from different communities and friend groups, which meant we likely would not have become friends had we not been in this program. But I'm now happy to say that we are all very close. I truly believe that I would not be where I am today without the IB program. I'm proud to say that I will be tending the University of St. Andrews in Scotland next year to study international relations and finance. I was also accepted into other top schools around the country, such as Cornell's Brook School of Public Policy and George Washington's Elliott School of International Affairs. Without the IB program, I do not think I would have had the opportunities at all these, at all these institutions of higher education. Going into the next four years of my life, I feel extremely prepared and ready thanks to the IB diploma program. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Okay. This next group is on one topic and they will also get two minutes and forty-five seconds. Victor Voladoras.
Greetings and good afternoon, Honorable Board of Trustees. My name is Victor Vayadis with Resilience Orange County in support here with CHAMOY, which is short for Changing Hearts and Minds of Youth. A little bit about Resilience Orange County. We moved to the city of Costa Mesa. We've been organizing. We are a community-based organization in 2022. In the short amount of time that we've been here in Costa Mesa, we've been able to take community-led initiatives, such as the Rental Assistance Program in the city of Costa Mesa. We've also passed an eviction protection ordinance in 2023. We do a lot of advocacy for community members. And the reason why we're here today is to support the youth. You know, we are all here as, you know, helping out the community. Y'all are elected to support youth. And what better people to hear from than community members that y'all are elected to, to represent? Their voices are very important as all these, these comments that are going to be coming are coming directly from, directly impact committee members. We've seen the tragic stuff that we've seen on the news of kidnappings of people, citizens, undocumented folks, without any due process. That's the big thing, right? No due process. We've seen immigrants being kidnapped, one with three fellow Marines. One is Iraqi war veteran and two are active-duty members of the community. In, in a couple of moments, you will be hearing directly from community on how it's impacted them and how scared folks are. Emotions, there's a lot of emotions that are going around. And we've seen organic movements happen here in Costa Mesa. We've seen people just being fed up, not being able, personally myself, I've already kind of been desensitized after the first week of these horrendous, horrendous, horrendous events that have been happening throughout California. We have community members. We have people that y'all serve as well that are directly affected. And I love seeing that the board is made up of all women. That's awesome. That's awesome. That's awesome. And I, and I do know that, you know, as being a mama's boy, my mom just always listened, you know, being very empathetic. And I hope that y'all just have that in your hearts to listen to the stories and how impacted youth are and what you could do to support the youth that you are elected to do. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next up, Kevin.
Just one moment. Okay. Good afternoon, honorable school board members. My name is Kevin. I am a student at Estancia High School. And what Victor said, I am part of the club after school. And I'm here today on what's happening on the mass hysteria on deportation. Sorry if I'm a little shy. This is my first time talking to you, to you guys. But I'm brave enough to talk about, more about the situation and how my community is facing and how it really impacted me and my other friends. I'm noticing online about the mass kidnapping that has been happening to my community and how I feel right now is, I have nothing else to say, but just, this is not how I expected my summer to be like. And Costa Mesa is a place where our community can help each other, like helping communities that are struggling with financial problems or just kind of connecting one another and kind of having a same connection from culture, food, or other differences. What I think is something that should be addressed is how people are being treated. The way how I see on social media, the way how what we call ICE or how we think they're going to help us protect our community is not something how they should treat my community, my relatives, or other, like my friends' relatives or anyone in that type of way. And I feel like that has really impacted a lot of people to protest. And I think it's a good way for them, like for history to come on and see what's been happening and see what should be changed and what our world needs to do better. And my message is to whoever people want us to get rid of us, or me, or whoever, I want them to treat me and my community with fairness and respect. I shouldn't feel scared whether my relatives will come back or my neighbors come back, or anyone. I hope my school year starts without fear and that our school district protect our students and families. No more deportation. ICE out of OC. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, sorry if I mispronounced your name, but it's Zha, Haza? It's, sorry, it looks like it's an HZA. Or is that an I? Oh, ITZA, sorry.
Hello, my name is Itza. Good afternoon, honorable school members. My name is Itza. I'm a former student at Estancia High School and with CHAMOY, Changing Hearts and Minds of Youth. I am here today to discuss a com, a complex topic. As you may know, NAMUSD has a large percentage of Latino students. I'm asking you to keep these students in mind during this terrible and scary times because every student deserves the right to confidently walk into school without the fear of being taken away. Thank you.
Thank you.
Melinda Exstalali.
Hello, my name is Stalali.
And my name is Melinda.
And we are currently our students at CMHS, Costa Mesa High School, and we are part of CHAMOY. We are here today because we want to support the immigrant community.
We want to help make the, the immigrants feel welcome so then when they walk outside, they don't feel afraid of kidnappings.
It's heartbreaking to see families getting separated from their children and children being affected. Children being affected by the situation.
With this situation, children aren't able to see their parents because of these kidnappings. Immigrants came here for their children to have a future that they could not have.
Kids need to be protected, not only them, but their parents, which are their support system. So we beg of you to do your all to protect the immigrant community. Therefore, if immigrants can't fight for their rights, then us as their children, we will.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, Jackie.
Hello, good afternoon, honorable school board members. My name is Jackie and I'm currently a student at Estancia High School and I'm here with our group CHAMOY and I'm here to discuss the recent ICE raids in Costa Mesa. These ICE raids have not only been impacting us individually, they have affected our neighbors, our families, our businesses. The streets are bare and people are living in fear. Stores and churches are all empty and children are scared for their parents. That is a problem with these ICE raids. They are tearing families apart and inducing fear within our communities. Residents are afraid to be out in public just by the chance of them being profiled or questioned simply for the way they look or speak. Even my own parents are afraid of what might happen next. At this point in time, it's no longer about being illegal or an immigrant. It's straight-up racism and we as a community are not going to stay silent and tolerate it. I have lived in Costa Mesa my whole life and seeing this happen in real time, it's heartbreaking, it's sad, it's depressing, and it's unjust. Costa Mesa is more than a city. It's a home. It's a home to every person who lives here and they deserve to feel safe. Let this be a call to action to our school board members to protect our students and our families. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, Milton Castro.
Good afternoon, Newport Mesa Unified School District. I'm here to talk about the ICE and how it's affected our community. For me, it is hard to see all this happening, all my friends being affected by this. I even had to go grocery shopping without my dad. It was hard. Just him not being there and not having, just thinking about him not being there at all. It's just heartbreaking for me. Another topic I want to discuss that has affected my friend, Jose Gomez. He wanted to go to Manhattan University. And now, because that ICE is happening, he cannot go there anymore. He has to take care of his siblings, which is heartbreaking to me because he's always talking about New York, how it's helped him. Whenever he went during his junior year, he talked about how it made him feel the most happiest there. And now seeing him not being able to go anymore, it's just sad. ICE has affected the Hispanic-Latino community in a very hard way. And I want all our students to be safe and be able to go wherever they want to go, whether it's New York, here, or somewhere else. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, Amelga Alperes. Sorry if I mispronounced your name.
Hello, good evening, honorable school members and Board of Trustees. My name is Amelin. I graduated this year from Estancia High School and I'm with CHAMOY, who stands for Changing Hearts and Minds of Youth. I want to talk about the mass deportation and how it's affecting students and families. I have seen my sister scared to go to school this year because she worries her parents might not be there when she gets back. My parents are also terrified as they might not see her, but more, oh, graduate. I know many parents have been feeling this way. No parent should have to say goodbye to their kids in a worry that it might be their last time. I fear this, and I fear, I hear this in our, I hear this fear in our conversations with my parents about what might happen next. I asked the school board to help protect our community with these issues. We need support for our students who are scared and make sure our schools are safe places. Some examples include having virtual know-your-rights training like SAUSD or mental health support for our youth in these hard times. I hope our new school year starts without fear and that our school district protects our students and families. No more deportation. ICE out of OC. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Superintendent's Comments.
Always bummed when the people that come here, they speak and they leave. And so all the things I wanted to look at them and say, I, I don't get to. I guess lucky them. For those people that are still here and, and the fifteen of you at home watching on YouTube, I want to be clear that on the first item of International Baccalaureate, we're not looking to get rid of it, just so we're clear. We're proud of, of the program. Furthermore, we're proud of Newport Harbor High School. What they're doing in the way, and, and Mr. Armstrong mentioned this, of, of creating greater access and getting better results, that's the secret sauce, right? That takes truly exceptional professionals to expand access and improve achievement. And we're proud of them. We've seen that in the district in AP, where we have more students taking AP exams and the pass rate's higher. That's amazing. And now we have similar results in, in IP. And so we're, we're grateful for that program. It really differentiates our district. A, a lot of districts, most don't offer it. We do. It's just one more thing that we look to our community and say, you can choose to go somewhere else. Don't know why you would. Choice is yours, but if you choose to stay here, we've got myriad opportunities for your students and this is just one of them. It's one of the things that we look at and we say, how can we expose even more students to that? So to be clear, proud of that program, proud to have it in our district, grateful for the hard work at Newport Harbor. I think we can't wait to see the preliminary data, I think, or the real data. The preliminary data is very encouraging for Newport Harbor. If all things go as planned and next year we see similar gains, they should qualify for a California Distinguished If all things go as planned and next year we see similar gains, they should qualify for a California distinguished school. And, um, I think that school, because of who it serves, uh, and the passion with which it serves, I can't think of a better school to, to earn that distinction. So kudos to, to them for their hard work. Um, on, on the second item, I just, look, we understand that our students are impacted uh, by their, uh, their fears, what they're experiencing, uh, food insecurities, housing insecurities, securities in general. I'll limit my comments as a district employee to kind of what the last speaker spoke on and that is what, what is the district doing? Um, we're certainly making sure that we're providing, um, as safe as we can, learning opportunities over the summer. We're educating almost forty-two hundred students this summer, larger than most school districts in California. They're getting academics, they're getting enrichment, they're being fed. And we're doing everything within the law to make sure that when they come to school, on their way to school, at school, um, they're riding the bus, uh, while they're at school, that, that they're safe. We also know that one's fear, one's mental health impacts your learning. To debate that is just silly. Um, how we're feeling impacts how we're doing, right? And so we offer a myriad supports there as well and this district has supported counselors at every elementary school and, um, you know, school psychologists, we have those resources. And so one of the things we're focusing on over the summer is making sure that our, our families know that we have these supports for them throughout the year, that the supports don't stop in June, right? That they are all year long. Um, and then we know that we have community allies out there, um, that have meetings, service, uh, services they can provide, et cetera, that we don't. Um, but one of the functions of the district is to make our communities aware of community resources. We are a community partner, we are a community ally, and we welcome that information and then share it where appropriate. And that's one of the things that we've been working on a lot this spring and will continue to work on. I know uh, my team has met with some of the folks in the room here speaking tonight about their concerns and where those concerns impact schools and what we can do, again, to make sure that our students are safe. Right? All eighteen thousand kids in this district deserve to come to school and be safe while they're at school learning, right? Um, we're even doing things, I, I mentioned other insecurities, food insecurities. This district for years um, has provided meal distribution over the summer because we know that some of our students don't eat as much when they're not at school. And so we provide opportunities for them to come to be fed. Um, so I'm proud to work in a district where their focus and the six people to my left, there's no division in this, uh, a commitment to making sure our students are safe, that they're fed and that we're addressing, uh, their fears and their mental health concerns. Uh, and so I'm, I'm grateful to work here.
Thank you. Um, next we have community input on agendized items. Do we have any comment cards? You have an opportunity to speak when the item comes up or if you want to speak now. So I will call your name and if you'd like to speak when the item is up, let me know. Um, Joe Monday?
I'll wait.
Okay. Kathy Hartwell? You'd like, wait till the item comes up? Okay, great. Vicki Schnell? Later, okay. And then Amber Reyes? Okay, great. So we'll move on to achievement. Report on LCFF Local Performance Indicators for California State Dashboard Assistant Superintendent Shields.
Hi, good evening. As part of our annual submission of the LCAP to the county, one of the last time we met, you heard about the academic achievement and plans and how we're spending our money. The other plan, the other part of the plan really is about how we're doing on local indicators, which don't show up at the state level on a dashboard or at that level. There are criteria, but we actually are judging ourselves. And part of what we have to do is share with you and the public how we're doing on those indicators. And for that, Vanessa Gally will take us through the work.
Fantastic. Thank you. Good evening. President Yagan, Superintendent Smith, um, trustees, cabinet, members of the board. Bob? Thank you. Tonight I'm here to present the Local Performance Indicators, um, to the board and to the public. Uh, this is a state requirement. Uh, all districts are required to address eight, uh, state priorities. And, um, of those eight, five of which we need to, uh, address with the Local Indicators Report. So currently, if someone was to go on the website today, the district or school websites or, um, the state, you would see a dashboard that has the twenty-three, twenty-four outcomes. And so, um, we report on the twenty-four, twenty-five outcomes and, um, as much as we can. And then all of that will be, uh, made available on November fifteenth. So the content of the report from this evening will be available in November. And what we're really addressing are the areas in the red, um, outlined at the bottom. So, uh, the requirement of districts is under the Local Performance Indicators to measure progress, to then report on the results to the public and both through the report and then also through the dashboard. And then finally, by virtue of measuring and reporting, districts determine whether they have met the criteria. So in state priority one, which is really considered the basic conditions of learning, um, the metrics are around teacher credentialing, uh, access to curriculum and instructional materials, and then the safe, clean and functional, um, school facilities. Um, state reporting is lagged. So if one was to go on to state reporting, you would find twenty-two, twenty-three teacher assignment monitoring and outcome data. And so that would be currently on the dashboard. We anticipate they will have updated data, um, in August or September and would be available on twenty, uh, the twenty-four, twenty-five outcomes. So what we do have from the CalSAS system is twenty-three, twenty-four preliminary data. And we just want to highlight that we do very well with having, um, appropriately assigned teachers. Out of our entire district, we had eight sections, not eight teachers, eight sections of teacher misassignment. And so again, that's still a little bit lagged, but that will be through the CalSAS reporting. And then, um, we do a report, uh, annually in October around instructional materials alignment. All students have access to all core curriculum. And then we use the facilities inspection tool. Safe, clean and functional school facilities, um, all meet the good or exemplary, um, criteria. In terms of implementation of state academic standards, the state provides a self-reflection tool. So I'm going to show you an example and then talk you through just the highlights. And they give us, uh, ways to measure, um, the professional learning, the availability of the instructional material, um, how we're providing staff, um, ways to improve their instruction, looking at other academic standards and then support for teachers and administrators. The self-reflection tool is on a five-point scale. And so this is an example of what it might look like. Um, so in professional learning, um, what you're seeing is, um, some improvement. So the X's represent what is now and so four, uh, means, uh, full implementation. Um, and you'll see that in both next-gen science and mathematics, we've had a movement upward. So we're really pleased, um, as we've rolled up some of the, um, work with the elementary levels in particular, with the new adoptions and a second year implementation of, um, science coming on, that we feel like the district is really moving forward in that regard. And we have so many different tools, whether it's a co-teaching models or, um, different planned trainings, um, to support, um, our professional learning. So we're pleased to give you some of the highlights in each of the other, uh, areas. Um, again, uh, aligned instructional materials availability, the self-reflection tool, um, evidence that we are at full implementation in each of the core areas of English Language Arts, English Language Development, Mathematics, Next Gen Science and History Social Science. So, um, we're, we're pleased with those results. Um, in looking at the policy and program support, the structures in place, things like having instructional coaches, um, having early release systems, having our push-in, um, co-teaching models, having principals do classroom walkthroughs, all of those areas in, um, supporting staff, um, and improved instruction. We are at full implementation in four of the five areas and we're working hard to bring social science, um, out of initial and into full implementation as well. In implementing other academic standards, whether it's career tech education, health ed, physical ed, VAPA and world language, we're at full implementation in the self-reflection tool, proud of, um, the, uh, CTE pathways that we've developed, the visual and performing arts that we provide. And of course, on the elementary and secondary PD, PE, PE, uh, models that we have. Finally, with the support for teachers and administrators, we are at full implementation when thinking about identifying the professional learning needs of groups and teachers as a whole. And really what we are going to continue to, um, focus on is, um, identifying the professional learning needs of individuals and then supporting teachers when they've not mastered, um, those standards. In terms of parent and family engagement, the self-reflection tool provides, um, uh, three areas, building relationships, building partnership, partnerships and seeking input. The building relationships is, um, the key area that we feel like Newport Mesa is really, um, shining at and we want to highlight some of the growth that we've made um, in building the capacity of staff, um, and really building those trusting relationships. Um, thinking about, um, also the, uh, progress in creating welcoming environments and really continuing to lean into that work. Again, we want to note some of the increases from prior year. Um, we are, um, pleased with, um, pulling together this information from focus groups, from surveys of administrators, school community facilitators, parents and families, and then also our, um, LCAP survey where, um, people will respond to how comfortable they feel, um, um, talking about academics, being welcomed at their child's school, et cetera. So, um, we're, we're pleased with those results. So that was building relationships. In terms of building partnerships, one of the district strengths is looking at, um, providing information and resources for students, um, in their learning and at home. Um, our LCAP survey responses show that parents are given the resources and support they need to support children's learning in core subject areas. Eighty-four percent agree or strongly, uh, agree in English Language Development, eighty-three percent in reading, seventy-three percent in the area of English Language Arts, seventy percent in math and sixty-seven percent in technology. So, um, we're pleased at that strength. Uh, we also know that an area of, um, focus for us is to continue with professional learning about the assets that students are bringing from home and really looking at, building capacity to look at what strengths that the students are bringing in terms of their linguistics and their cultural assets. Finally, in seeking input, that really is about looking at our structures of advisory and two-way communication. And so we have a robust, um, offerings in school site council, English learner advisory committee, district English learner advisory committee. We have many advisories. And so really what we're working with our sites is to continue to encourage families to come and partner with us. We have many opportunities and we want to hear from all of our families. So we are, um, at ranging an initial from full implementation depending on, um, the metric. And then lastly, uh, second to last, we are, um, looking at school climate. The requirement for school climate is to administer a local climate survey at least every other year, but in Newport Mesa, we strive for more. We do this annually. And so, um, these are some of the response rates you can see, um, over the last three years. Um, in terms of getting, um, student voice, um, in key areas. And so, um, there are many questions, um, that are asked and of course, the, the questions are made available to anyone who wants to see them ahead of time. But the key areas that we look at for the local indicators are school connectedness, caring adults, school safety and high expectations. And we're pleased to report that in each of these areas, the students in all grade levels went up at least one percentage point and up to four percentage points. So in terms of students agreeing or strongly agreeing that they have high school connectedness, um, it ranged from a low of fifty-eight percent to seventy-six percent for school connectedness, for caring adults, um, present on campus and reaching out to them. A range of fifty-five percent to seventy-three percent of students agree or strongly agree that that is a key protective factor in place. For school safety, students feeling safe on campus ranged from fifty-nine percent agreeing to strongly, strongly agreeing all the way up to eighty-one percent. And finally, with those high expectations, a range of seventy-one percent to eighty-six percent strongly agreed or agreed that there were high expectations in place, um, for them on campuses. In terms of course access, this is the degree to which schools and districts provide access to a broad course of study, including all of the required courses, um, in education, uh, codes. And then thinking about how do we remove barriers for students who may experience, um, additional need, students who are unduplicated, which means low income, English learner, foster youth or homeless, as well as our individuals with exceptional needs. And so the ways that Newport Mesa does this is through, um, a default program of the broad courses studied to as many students as possible. Um, we augment that in-class rich instruction with, um, music, PE and science specialists. Um, and that is, um, provided both by in-class, um, teachers of record and then the additional specialists. The secondary broad courses study, same thing. We offer, um, all of the core and some of those outcomes you can see reflected in our graduation rates. You can see that in the other subset of students who meet the UC or CSU requirements. And, um, the eighty-eight courses that we offer of, uh, visual and performing arts with almost five thousand students, uh, attending, um, our VAPA at the secondary level. We also are pleased, um, to, um, continue to highlight the, uh, career technical education programs in our zones and the robust pathways that are offered. And again, year over year, our CTE completer number and percentage is up. Um, and really when we're looking at all of these key factors and it informs the development of our LCAP in terms of what we're offering to all, to some and to few, you may, uh, recall that that's the structure of our local control and accountability plan. So again, we highlight our default programs, our pathways, the intervention models and courses, and of course, our after-school and summer programs as mentioned. So, uh, we do a robust analysis of any of the barriers that may be in the way for students to continue to access our programs. We, uh, identify extra courses to provide. We, uh, have amplified our support for English learners. Um, we have amplified our support for inclusive practices. And so, um, we continue to analyze those local performance indicators. You will see the content of this published both on our website and then in November, November fifteenth, you'll see, uh, this noted as well on the California school dashboard. So when we measure progress and we report the results, we determine that we've met the requirements and thus Newport Mesa has once again met the requirements.
Thank you. This is great. And so this is the, uh, the second part of our LCAP journey.
Extravaganza, if you will.
Thank you. This is very thorough. Uh, questions from the board? Trustee Crane?
Yeah, on, on slide twelve, the one that shows the, um, the twenty-two-four, twenty-five LCAP survey, percent of respondents who agree and strongly agree with, um, do you want to, do you know which slide that is? The one that shows the indicator, to what extent you agree with the following statements?
Yes.
Um, so how, how many, does it say how many were surveyed? Are those?
This is how many respondents were there. So they may not have answered every single question or they may have answered some hennes. And then the whole overall survey was offered to both, um, employees and to parents and to community members. So this is specifically parents.
Okay, this is specifically parents.
Mm-hmm. And then the survey analysis is also posted on the website.
Those are some good numbers.
Yes.
So how did the numbers differ from this year to, to last year?
Um, I would have to get you the exact numbers, but they're almost the same or slightly higher in a couple key areas.
Trustee Murphy?
As always. Thanks, Vanessa. Um, so, um, okay, so you said you, you look at some of the metrics, right? And look at how we can maybe fix or implement something different or change, make changes. So on, um, on the slide, uh, where you, where we're seeing that there, I mean, it's granted, it's very small, uh, numbers of parents who said they don't agree. Um, or even smaller, it looks like, disagree with some of those indicators about being comfortable discussing their child's academic progress. I feel welcome at my child's school. So, I mean, they're, they're not, you know, they're not terrible numbers, but it's certainly any number in that area is like a cause for concern. So have you been able to identify what might be leading or what might be making having parents respond that way? Is there more, are we going to know more about what we can do to address those issues is?
So the, the survey itself would not give us that because it's not going to give us the, the patterns by, by school. It's not going to tell us why. So we would need to do a deeper dive into finding out probably by school, what would be some of the factors? So there are some survey tools that do kind of do a second level questioning. If you say disagree or, or strongly disagree, then what would be some causes? And that's definitely something that we could look at in future iterations.
Yeah, I would really want to see that. Um, again, these are not, you know, they're not terrible numbers necessarily, but any parent not feeling comfortable in these areas is, you know, is something we would want to address and make sure that they, we figure out a way for them to feel comfortable.
Absolutely.
Yeah, whatever you come back with, that would be really great.
Okay. Trustee Ursula?
Thank you for this. I just had one question about, do we know why the response rate for eleventh graders dropped twenty percent? What's the, because everyone else was pretty standard, but that one dropped. Is there one certain school didn't do it or something or what's the?
There was a school that didn't have, uh, ideal participation. But I am confident that next year, their participation will be ideal.
That was a thought of Irelia.
Great answer. Okay.
Yes.
Any other questions from the group? All right. Well, thank you so much, Vanessa. It's awesome. Okay, now moving on to, um,
Now to the consent calendar.
Moving on to the consent calendar. Do I have a motion?
I, yes, yes.
So moved.
No, no.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was trying to say move before you did anything.
I think trustee Murphy.
Thank you. I would like, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent calendar. Um, but pool item number sixteen dot B dot thirteen and move that to
But pool item number sixteen dot B dot thirteen and move that to discussion.
Sixteen, what is it?
Sixteen dot B dot three.
Thirteen.
Thirteen. Sorry.
Sixteen B thirteen.
Yeah. Just move it to discussion, please.
The carousel list?
Yeah.
So moved. So moved. Okay, we have a motion by trustee Murphy, seconded by trustee Anderson. Do I have...
Let's do the vote.
Trustee Wigan?
Yes.
Trustee Ursula?
Yes.
Trustee Murphy?
Yes.
Trustee Pearson?
Yes.
Trustee Anderson?
Yes.
Trustee Crane?
Yeah.
Okay, moving on to discussion action, seventeen A. Approve recommendation for chief negotiator twenty-twenty-five. Dr. Smith?
During our annual reorganization meeting, one of the things that the board identifies as chief negotiator, and as you may or may not have noticed, our chief negotiator is bailing on us. And so we'd ask for you then to name the successor. Tracy Niss will be our next assistant superintendent of human resources as the district's chief negotiator.
Do I have a motion?
Still moved.
Second, trustee Ursula. All right, moved by trustee Crane, seconded by trustee Ursula. Roll cover. Trustee Wigan? Yes. Trustee Ursula? Trustee Murphy?
Yes.
Trustee Pearson?
Yes.
Trustee Anderson?
Yes.
Trustee Crane?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries, six oh. Seventeen B, so we actually have six now comments on this item. And so I will call the speaker's name and they can come up to the mic and speak, and you will have three minutes. Joe Monday. And sorry, let me talk about the item number. It's seventeen B, approve the recommendation for the Newport Mesa Unified School District Naming Committee to name the Estancia Theater to the Barbara Van Holt Performing Arts Theater. Dr. Torres, I'll let you speak before the speaker. Sorry, sir.
Thank you. So we have a process in our board policies that provide the Board of Education through Board Policy seventy-three-ten to name facilities. In front of you this evening, you have a recommendation from the Newport Mesa Unified School District.
Ms. Torres, Dr. Torres, I was actually wrong. I was right in the beginning, but wrong on my second, so.
No problem.
I will let you speak after Joe Monday speaks, so sorry about that.
I can repeat myself.
Okay, you were doing such a good job. Yeah, yeah. That was good practice. All right.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Sorry, Joe.
No, good evening. I am here tonight to talk to you about the naming of the theater complex to the Barbara Van Holt Performing Arts Center and the Pauline Moranian Main Stage. Now, who am I? My name is Joe Monday, and I am an alumni of Estancia High School, class of nineteen-eighty-six. I am a friend of Barbara Van Holt's. I am a friend and college classmate of Pauline Moranian. I am a community-involved person. I am a member, I am an executive board member of Scouting America here in Orange County. I am a corporate cabinet member of the Orange County United Way. I am a father of an Eagle Scout and a Girl Scout Gold Award winner. And why do I share with you my resume? It's because I am who I am because of the Estancia Theater Program. My life has taken its path because educators such as Barbara and Pauline took the time with students like myself to teach me not only about their subject matter expertise, but to install in me a passion, a passion that involves my understanding of empathy in my world, of the arts and the role arts play in all of our lives, and how people come together and build a legacy. That legacy we're here to talk about tonight is Pauline and Barbara. What they have established and started at Estancia High School deserves to be recognized tonight by naming both of those entities tonight, the Barbara Van Holt Performing Arts Center and the Pauline Moranian, the main stage. Now, when we talk about naming this, let's not forget, it's not only in honor of those two, it's in honor of all of those students' lives that they touched. They started something that will go through thousands of people in our community. And as my example goes, goes to even more, because again, I learned that lesson. Let's do the right thing tonight, please, and name both properly. Let's not delay one of the votes. Let's honor both. I know Barbara would have loved to have been here to have seen this herself. And I know Pauline deserves also to receive this honor tonight. Thank you all, and I appreciate your consideration. And I'd love to see you at the gala.
Thank you. Next up, Kathy Hartwell?
Thank you very much for letting me talk here. My name is Kathy Hartwell, and I'm a resident of Costa Mesa. I am currently a board member of the Estancia T. Winkle Foundation and a member of the Estancia Theater Gala Committee. I'm a mom of three adult children who went to Adams, T. Winkle Middle School, and Estancia High School. I'm speaking to you this evening to voice my support to the naming of the new theater at Estancia High School to the Barbara Van Holt Performing Arts Center. I'm also in favor of naming the stage inside the theater to the Pauline Moranian Main Stage. Both of these women devoted their lives to the drama department at Estancia. Their passion for excellence and dedication to the students has instilled a lifelong impact on those that were involved. This is very evident in those that are working on the Theater Gala Committee, Estancia graduates from the seventies, eighties, and nineties, who lives were changed by their involvement with the drama department, and these two ladies. I sat in awe and listened to their stories about how drama shaped their lives. I have been on many committees throughout my forty-three years here in Costa Mesa, but never encountered such a diverse group of passionate people like those folks behind me. I, alongside these committee members and graduates of Estancia Drama, wholeheartedly support the naming of the Estancia High School Theater as the Barbara Van Holt Performing Arts Center and the Pauline Moranian Main Stage. Thank you.
Thank you. Amber Reyes?
Hello. Board members, Dr. Smith, fellow attendees. My name is Amber Reyes. I'm an Estancia Drama alum who also student-taught under Pauline Moranian, and I shared a special bond with Barbara Van Holt. Leading the drama program today has been the greatest honor of my life. I want to address the current naming recommendation from the naming committee. While I really appreciate their time and effort, the recommendation doesn't fully reflect the depth and the impact of Estancia Drama's history and legacy. I ask you to consider a more accurate recognition, one that honors both Barbara Van Holt and Pauline Moranian at the time of the opening. Barbara led Estancia Drama for twenty-one years, and Pauline for twenty-six. Barbara handpicked Pauline to carry on the work, and Pauline mentored me to do the same. For nearly fifty years, only two directors had loved the program. And that's not just dedication, that's a real legacy. Barbara was a visionary who made every student feel valued, and Pauline did the same exact thing, working tirelessly without seeking recognition, just wanting every student to feel safe and deeply loved. And I'm one of many lives she has changed. When Pauline stepped away from the drama program and passed the baton to me, there was no formal celebration or recognition like she deserved. Still, she continues to give, cheering on the students, offering guidance whenever I ask for it, and she always shows up. And the current students, they know her, and they love her. And they just value her opinion and just her presence more than anyone else's. Imagine the new generation of performers and technicians receiving praise from Ms. Moranian after a show on the Pauline Moranian Main Stage. That is a living legacy, and it's so profound. And this theater should give students the chance to be a part of something far greater than they'd ever imagined. In a recent community survey, ninety-four percent supported naming the main stage after Pauline, and ninety percent supported Barbara. This response reflects what we all know. This recognition is deeply deserved, and the community wants it, the drama program wants it, and this next generation deserves to know whose shoulders they stand on when the theater opens. Some may hesitate about naming two spaces, but this is a standard practice in performing arts centers, and we need to just simply lead with clarity from the beginning. The Barbara Van Holt Performing Arts Center and the Pauline Moranian Main Stage represent the heart and legacy of Estancia Drama. Two women, countless lives, past, present, and future, shaped by their love and leadership. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Next, Milton Castro?
Good evening, again. My name is Milton Castro. I am a current student at Estancia, and I am currently in Estancia Drama Theater. Drama in Estancia has changed my life in the greatest way possible. I mean, I have an amazing director, teacher, right there. What else could you say about that? She has changed my life for the better. And with all these connections, these friendships, these relationships that I get to experience in these thirty years of drama, it has truly changed my life for the better. Although Barbara Van Holt wasn't there, she did put an impact on what drama is for us today. It is true that a lot of us in drama wanted to be called the Barbara Van Holt Theater and the Pauline Moranian Main Stage. Although I might, may not have a deep connection with Pauline, a lot of my peers in drama have another example, Jose Gomez. He always just loves Pauline Moranian. And I think just having this main stage, just being Pauline Moranian, just makes her legacy just so much more impactful. And of course, impactful to all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Vicki Schnell?
Okay, hello. Now, I'm only here, you already heard me last time. I'm only here to read a couple of letters that were sent to me yesterday, and they're former students, and they couldn't be here. The first one is from Gabby, formerly Cox, Estancia High School, class of two thousand six. Ms. Moranian is a living legend whose influence has shaped the lives of countless students who had the privilege of learning from her. I was a student in her program from two thousand two to two thousand six, and even nearly twenty years later, I carry the lessons she taught me. What made Ms. Moranian truly extraordinary was her ability to foster a genuine sense of community among her students. She consistently and deliberately chose to produce ensemble plays with large casts, which gave every student an opportunity to shine, ensuring no one was left behind. She created a space where each of us felt seen, valued, and empowered. More than a teacher, she was a mentor who inspired us to explore our creativity, take risks, and become our most authentic selves. Her legacy is not just in the performances we staged, but in the confidence and collaboration she instilled in us, these qualities that continue to serve me and so many others. In theater tradition, it is common to honor impactful individuals by naming specific parts of the space after them, stage, naming audience seats. Naming the new stage after Pauline Moranian would be a fitting tribute to the profound impact she has had on Estancia High School and its students. It would honor a career defined by passion, inclusivity, and the unwavering belief in the potential of every young person who walked on stage. The second letter is from, okay, 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 okay. Danielle Lenhart, and she is class of two thousand six as well. She fully supports the new theater named after both. Barbara Van Holt has made a lasting contribution to the Estancia Theater Program, and I was just corrected by her daughters that she taught thirty-two years and helped lay the foundation for future leaders like Pauline Moranian. At the same time, Pauline Moranian's influence on the Estancia Theater Program cannot be overstated. Her passion, creativity shaped the lives of countless students. Naming the stage after her is a fitting tribute to artistic legacy, her artistic legacy. And it goes on, but I don't have time. So thank you very much for considering naming the theater after both of these legends. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Emeline?
Good evening again. My name's Emeline. I'm an ex-alumni. I recently graduated this year from Estancia. I had the pleasure of being taught by both Ms. Moranian and Ms. Reyes when they were, when Ms. Reyes was barely learning, still mentoring under Ms. Moranian. And I had the pleasure of not, I didn't have the pleasure of meeting Barbara Van Holt, but the way Ms. Moranian spoke about her with such passion, you could tell she drove Ms. Moranian to consider going into the field of being an art, drama teacher, just by the story she would tell, just by the passion, and also by the same passion she herself had. And I could tell because also Ms. Reyes had that same passion. And the constant stories I would share and the fun I had under their guidance, I had the ability to be taught under Ms. Moranian for her film studies class. And even though it was never drama, you could tell the passion she had towards the art and the creativity we could express, not just through film, but through speaking, through talking. And she really encouraged me to continue advocating for what I thought specked my mind, as you can tell. And I really appreciate them, all three of them, even though I've never met Barbara Van Holt, she caused a domino effect, which we see now. And it would be lovely to see their legacy live on through the theater. That's how I knew about Barbara Van Holt. Even though I never met her, they still spoke about her with the same passion now. And it would be lovely to see them both be memorized forever through the theater. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, those are all our public comments on this item. So now, Dr. Torres?
Okay, I'll start over, just in case anybody missed the speech. So tonight in front of you, item seventeen B, is a recommendation from the Newport Mesa Unified School District Naming Committee to name the Estancia High School Theater to the Barbara Van Holt Performing Arts Center. Per Board Policy seventy-three-ten, the Board of Education has the opportunity to name facilities, and we had a community member bring forward this recommendation, bring forward the recommendation for both the Barbara Van Holt Theater and the Pauline Moranian Main Stage. As part of our policy, we bring together an ad hoc committee that is made up of different members of all of our communities, not just the Estancia High School zone, but every, every zone that we have. And so that committee came together twice, once to meet and receive the recommendation. We launched our survey as part of that ad hoc committee, and then they met again to review the results of that and then to make the recommendation. From that committee meeting, the final meeting that we had just before graduation, the committee at that time recommended the motion to bring forward to the Board of Education to name the theater, the Barbara Van Holt Theater. As part of that process, and just to kind of ground ourselves in our thinking this evening, our theaters have historically been named the name of the school theater. So we have the Costa Mesa Performing Arts Theater and Center. We have the Newport Harbor Theater, we have Cronell Mar Theater, and then we have, coming now, online proudly, our Estancia High School Theater.
Do I have a motion? Do you want me to? I thought you were going to do it. We have some confusion. So do we make a substitute motion?
Yes.
Okay.
There is a motion.
Oh, okay.
Oh, okay.
You can move whatever you want.
Oh, okay. So, thank you, Dr. Torres, for the overview. And thank you to all of the community that is so invested in making sure that we honor both of the women. The motion that I would make would be the naming of the building. It's the Estancia Performing Arts Center, the Barbara Van Holt Theater, and the Pauline Meranian Main Stage. The two ladies getting their different parts of the building named after them. And then that leaves the black box to be named, perhaps after Ms. Reyes.
I second that.
Second. From Carol.
Okay. Moved with those amendments by Trustee Ursulu and seconded by Trustee Crane. Roll call vote.
Trustee Wigan?
Yes.
Trustee Soylou?
Yes.
Trustee Murphy?
Yes.
Trustee Pearson?
Yes.
Trustee Anderson?
Yes.
Trustee Crane. Trustee Crane.
Yes.
Motion carries 6-0. All right. 17C, let's see if I can get some claps. Approve addition to high and middle school courses study? Yay. Dr. Torres?
Yay. It's been an exciting night tonight. In front of you have item 17C, which provides to you two new courses that came into development called Academic Language Development for grades nine and 10 as part of our English Language Development Program and part of our federal program monitoring outcomes. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Okay. Moved by Trustee Crane, seconded by Trustee Ursulu. Roll call vote.
Trustee Wigan?
Yes.
Trustee Soylou?
Yes.
Trustee Murphy?
Sorry.
Trustee Murphy? Trustee Pearson?
Yes.
Trustee Anderson?
Yes.
Trustee Crane? Yes.
Motion carries 6-0. 17D, approve AP textbook adoption. Dr. Torres?
Yes, as part of our process, our textbooks, whenever they are brought forward for either adoption or renewed adoption, they're brought forward for the 30-day review. And so tonight you have in front of you the approval of those textbooks listed here. Those are advanced placement courses. And these books are new editions of existing texts. And they have been on review for 30 days.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by, was that Trustee Anderson? Seconded by Trustee Crane.
Roll call vote. Trustee Wigan?
Yes.
Trustee Soylou?
Yes.
Trustee Murphy?
Yes.
Trustee Pearson?
Yes.
Trustee Anderson?
Yes.
Trustee Crane?
Yes.
Motion carries 6-0. 17E, approve 2025-2026 student board members. Trustee Ursulu?
So I'm reading the entire thing.
You can read it or just speak to it.
So it is recommended that the Board of Education approves the selection of our student board members for 2025-26 academic year. We went through an extensive selection process and several board members here did some of the interviews with the students. And so we would like to welcome the following student board members to serve this year. Back Bay High School still has not determined their students, so we're hoping that some folks apply in the near future. But Corona Del Mar High School has Mackenzie Vovan. Costa Mesa High School has Kenley Lopez. Early College High School has Jeremy Lor. Estancia High School has Rosalyn Ruiz. Newport Harbor High School has Audrey Salamon. And Montevista High School has Grace Butcher. So welcome to the new student board members. Great. Do we have a, do I have a motion?
Yes. I would like to approve the selection of the 2025-26 student board members as presented.
Second. Moved by Trustee Anderson, seconded by Trustee Ursulu. Roll call vote.
Trustee Wigan?
Yes.
Trustee Soylou?
Yes.
Trustee Murphy?
Yes.
Trustee Pearson?
Yes.
Trustee Anderson?
Yes.
Trustee Crane?
Yes.
Motion carries 6-0. 17F, approve SLPA Local Plan Services Plan and SLPA Annual Budget Plan for the 2025-2026 school year. Dr. Jockum.
Good evening. Thank you. I'm sure you recall the riveting annual service and budget plan presentation from the prior board meeting. And there was a public hearing to also solicit input on it. And so tonight it's brought forward for your adoption.
So moved.
I second.
Moved by Trustee Crane, seconded by Trustee Pearson. Roll call vote.
Trustee Wigan?
Yes.
Trustee Soylou?
Yes.
Trustee Murphy?
Yes.
Trustee Pearson?
Yes.
Trustee Anderson?
Yes.
Trustee Crane?
Yes.
Motion carries 6-0. 17G, adopt the 2025-2026 Local Control and Accountability Plan. Dr. Shields?
With the board's approval tonight, we would submit the LCAP plan to the county for their review and approval. And that would keep us compliant for the annual LCAP approval process, which would, as the scaley shared, would be on our website, available to the public. Shorter versions will be available, executive summaries, translated, probably even a visual that helps simplify. We understand it's a cumbersome process and document and synthesis, and we'll create versions that help bring people into the understanding of what we are declaring through that documentation.
Okay, do I have a motion?
So moved.
That was like harmonized. I'll do Trustee Murphy. Who wants to second it?
I will.
Okay, Trustee Anderson. Okay, moved by Trustee Murphy, seconded by Trustee Anderson. Roll call vote.
Trustee Wigan?
Yes.
Trustee Soylou?
Yes.
Trustee Murphy?
Yes.
Trustee Pearson?
Yes.
Trustee Anderson?
Yes.
Trustee Crane?
Yes.
Motion carries 6-0. Okay, now I'm going to move, we move, we put the 17, the item that we pulled from Consent Calendar, we moved it to this section, and that was item 16B13, I believe.
Yes.
Dr. Torres? Yeah, so in front of you tonight, you have the renewal contract for Carisolus. Carisolus is a concierge service to be able to support our families by connecting service providers with our families and supporting those families who may struggle with being able to find mental health care and other health care services. So in front of you tonight, you have a renewal contract that would be for three years, from 2025 to 2028. We have been in contract, annual contract with Carisolus for the past couple of years.
Yes. Trustee Murphy?
Thank you, Dr. Torres. So just in looking over the report from Carisolus, I just had a couple of questions regarding their data collection. And certainly, I would love a little bit more in-depth knowledge about their service delivery and if they're able to, what happens in Orange County is there are a lot of waiting lists for behavioral health and mental health services. Providers can sometimes take a long time before they will see you. And so what I would like to know from them is if they're, if they have the ability to provide our families with services in the interim while they might be sitting on a wait list, waiting on a wait list to see their provider, if they have those community connections, because this is a valuable service. I know how hard it is in our community for families to be able to access mental health and behavioral health services. And so I'm not saying obviously that this service is not valuable. I would just like a little bit more information about how they're providing that service and a little more data about which schools, which zones are requesting the data, I mean, are requesting their services. And so my motion would be to just renew the contract for one year while we continue to analyze what they're providing us.
Second. Here we have a motion as amended by Trustee Murphy, text on the contract for one year, seconded by Trustee Ursulu. Roll call vote.
Can we have questions?
Oh, questions, excuse me. Sorry. Trustee Crane?
Do we know if we change the contract to a year, if the price goes up, or does it at all have a financial impact?
We will be able to evaluate that and determine if it's going to have any other impact. I don't believe it's going to go up significantly.
Okay.
But there could be a slight financial impact.
Thank you.
Trustee Anderson?
For the one year, if we could get more specialized data, it would be really helpful by school. If, I'm not sure what information is asked of a caller when they reach out to the hotline or connect, but I think it would be really helpful. I noticed there's certain demographics and genders that are reaching out with certain conditions. It would be great if we knew, oh, a majority of the calls are coming from this specific school. And then we can provide targeted response as well to maybe meet the need locally or on campus.
As part of your, as part of your feedback that tonight, that's something that we can bring back to Carisolus.
Thank you.
Trustee Ursulu?
Yeah, and talking about the data for Carisolus, if something else that we could ask for is their time to placement. So if they are referring people to places that also have a six-month wait, just like Cal Uptima would refer them to six-month wait, then I don't see the function. But if they are somehow getting people in in six weeks or two months to things that normally have a six-month waiting list, like that would be very valuable. So for me, it's all about what is their time to placement and how is that dramatically different than, or not, from what they would get from their public provider at Cal Uptima or from their own private plans listing. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, so we have a motion and a second. Roll call vote. Trustee Wigan?
Yes.
Trustee Soylou?
Yes.
Trustee Murphy?
Yes.
Trustee Pearson?
Yes.
Trustee Anderson?
Yes.
Trustee Crane?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries 6-0.
Moving on to 18, Resolution Adoption Calendar. 18A, Adopt Resolution Number 20-06-25, Education Protection Account Expenditure Determination. Mr. Trader.
In 2012, the voters approved Proposition 30, which created the Education Protection Account. The law requires the district to disclose how we spend that money and where we spend it. So it is spent on instructional salaries and benefits. And there is no administrative cost associated with this that we're spending. We expect to receive and expend $3,526,636 in Education Protection Account. And this is disclosed on our website under the Required Notices section on the web.
Okay, great. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Seconded. Okay. Moved by Trustee Anderson, seconded by Trustee Murphy. Roll call vote. Or questions? Oh, question, Trustee Anderson.
Thank you. Not a question, just a comment. I just wanted to say thank you so much for the hard work that you did this year in concert with Superintendent Smith with tightening our belts a little bit, knowing that all of the COVID money is not there anymore and we need to be a little bit more conservative in our spending. I was looking at the budget certification document and there's some really key areas for us to concentrate on. So I thank you so much for providing the full scope that you do, but also a lot of those productive and difficult conversations at times so we can move ahead fiscally responsible. Thank you.
Awesome. Anything else? Any other questions? Okay, roll call vote.
Trustee Wigan?
Yes.
Trustee Soylou?
Yes.
Trustee Murphy?
Yes.
Trustee Pearson?
Yes.
Trustee Anderson?
Yes.
Trustee Crane?
Yes.
Motion carries 6-0. 18B, Adopt Resolution Number 21-06-25, All Funds Budget, the 2025 to 2026 year. Mr. Trader.
Staff recommends approval of the all funds June budget for 25-26.
And as your last meeting and adoption of the budget, like, gosh, it's like a grand slam home run on your last, your last meeting here. Do we have any questions or comments?
So moved, you have to move first, right?
Oh. Trustee Murphy?
Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you.
Any other, oh, motion?
So moved.
I second.
Moved by Trustee Crane, seconded by Trustee Pearson. Roll call vote.
Trustee Wigan?
Yes.
Trustee Soylou?
Yes.
Trustee Murphy?
Yes.
Trustee Pearson?
Yes.
Trustee Anderson?
Yes.
Trustee Crane?
Yes.
Motion carries 6-0. Congrats. And then 18C, Adopt Resolution Number 24-06-25, On Board Compensation for Miss Meeting, Dr. Smith.
Yeah, by resolution, the board can approve compensation for trustees who have prepared for a meeting, prepared to serve, but because of illness, injury, jury duty, or hardship, couldn't attend. Trustee Ursulu was ill, couldn't attend. And so we're putting this forward so she can be compensated for the meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Trustee Crane, seconded by Trustee Pearson. Roll call vote.
Trustee Wigan?
Yes.
Trustee Soylou?
She had to retrieve herself? No, you can. Yes.
Why not? Trustee Murphy?
Yes.
Trustee Pearson?
Yes.
Trustee Anderson?
Yes.
Trustee Crane?
Yes.
Motion carries 6-0. Great, now moving on to informal reports. Superintendent Smith?
A lot of people ask, what are you doing for the summer? Educating, feeding, and enriching the lives of kids like we do all year, again, over 4,000 students. I just want to limit my comments today, tonight, to a big thank you to our staff for those folks that prepared for our summer scholars, for our extended school year, for our credit recovery. It's the planning, then it's the implementation, classified staff getting the schools ready, and transportation, and our certificated staff teaching the classes. You're doing amazing work and we're grateful for it. We're so lucky in this community to have the rich, extended learning opportunities we have, inclusive of our summer programs. Many, many, many districts can't touch the programs and services we provide our students. And so a big thank you to everybody that made that happen, seemingly simple, which it wasn't, but thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to start here with Trustee Ursulu. Thank you. And if my peers will indulge me, you know I never speak at these, but tonight I'm going to make a comment. So here we go. Primeramente, gracias por los jóvenes que vinieron para decir sus cosas a nosotros y por su abogacía. Muchísimas gracias y espero que continúe. Mis comentarios de esta noche son para nuestra comunidad que está asustada, cansada, y insegura ante el futuro. Como su representante, estoy aquí para apoyarlos. Nuestra responsabilidad como el distrito es mantener a sus hijos seguros en nuestras escuelas. Sus preocupaciones son las mías. Estoy aquí en frente de ustedes gracias a mi familia, mi familia de inmigrantes que vinieron aquí en busca de un vida mejor de contribuir, de contribuir a la comunidad. También he pasado los últimos 25 años trabajando con la comunidad latina y sé que la mayoría son personas que trabajan duro y cuidan a sus familias buscando el sueño americano como todos nosotros. La seguridad de sus hijos es nuestra prioridad. Siempre son bienvenidos en nuestras escuelas. El distrito y el equipo de Dr. Smith han capacitado al personal de recepción qué áreas son públicas y cuáles son privadas, donde no pueden entrar los desconocidos. Ahora hay recursos en las mesas de la recepción para ayudar con la preparación familiar. Nos dedicamos a la educación. Quiero que todos los niños lean, escriban, y pasen bien en matemáticas. No pueden alcanzar su potencial si no se sienten seguros. No pueden sentirse seguros si su familia no están seguros. Debemos hacer lo mejor para ellos. Además de lo que está haciendo el distrito, también hay muchos aliados, organizaciones y iglesias que trabajan para apoyarlos. Como la trustee Ashley Anderson está trabajando con bastante iglesias en la comunidad y hay muchos que son buena gente aquí para apoyarnos. Siempre pueden contactarme para que la conecte con recursos adicionales a lo que ofrecemos aquí. Pero como cualquier crisis, es fundamental a mantenerse informado. Por favor, conozcan sus derechos. Organizaciones como Chirla tienen toda la información que necesitan en su sitio web, en su website. Por favor, consultenlo. Hay ciertos documentos que deben tener. Mantengan la calma y sigue la ley. Al mismo tiempo, estén preparados y organicen sus documentos. Por último, estoy aquí para ustedes y pueden llamarme o mándeme un texto o email. En cualquier momento haré todo lo posible por orientarlos. Que Dios los bendiga. Gracias.
Do you have anything else? Trustee Murphy?
I wish I spoke Spanish, but I think what, I would just echo trustee Ursulu's point in that we will do everything we can to make sure that our students are safe this summer and, and in the fall and, and in the foreseeable future. So, I hope the students that were here heard our, your words, trustee Ursulu, and understand how this board feels about their safety, and it's our utmost priority. I just, I have a couple things. One, I would just like to thank Dr. DePauli Potness, who is the principal at Costa Mesa Middle School and High School. She is moving on after this year, or I guess, come June 30th. And I just wanted to thank her for all of her hard work on behalf of the students and families at Costa Mesa. She poured her heart into our kids, and she led with love and, and great affection for the, the betterment and the outcomes of all of the students at Costa Mesa Middle School and High School. So, I just want to thank her for that and, and wish her, her well and on her, you know, next endeavor, and know that we will always be wishing her well and thinking good thoughts for her in the future. And then, I also need to congratulate, hopefully I get this right. We had two CSCA members who are retiring. It is, and we're recognizing them. Rhonda let me know to recognize them from the dais, which I am happy to do. Eleanor Rebar, who's been with the, with Newport Mesa for 25 years. She was an accounting assistant, so thank you so much for all of your hard work. Twenty-five years is a lot to invest in the district, so we can't thank you enough for everything that you've done, and we hope you get to enjoy a fabulous retirement, just like our colleagues over here. Everyone else, Wes, is going off to have a lovely summer. Our other CSCA member who is also retiring is Peggy Webster, thirteen and two-thirds years with the district as a computer software analyst, so thank you. Thank you as well for your service. We really appreciate all that you do at CSCA. It really makes our schools run better, more on time, more efficiently, more effectively, and, and your care for the students and your work is, is, is always, you know, front of mind, I know, for all of you, and something that we all see and appreciate. So, thank you, you too. Have a wonderful summer. We will still be here if you want to come back. I think Rhonda even said, you're welcome to come back to any board meetings if you'd like, and, and if you feel like you're missing out on all the excitement, you will always have a place here.
We expect to see you particularly, Eleanor. I know this is where you love to be on these Tuesday nights.
Well, tonight, I'm extremely excited and thankful. Tonight, we renewed our Newport Beach SRO Officer Program, and I'm so thankful that our city council, our board members, and our district leadership, in that renewal, we were able to get that fifth day. We were able to have full coverage now at our high schools and junior highs here in Newport Beach. So I'm so excited about that. Thank you. I know that that full coverage at our high schools shows that we prioritize our safety on campuses, so thank you for that.
I was looking through the budget booklet, and one of the things that I noticed was, since we've added TK and several of our schools have preschool, it would be great if on the page that is, you know, has the money, like the school-connected organizations, and it has the populations of each school, if the preschool numbers could be added to that. So for instance, I was looking at Pomona to try and figure out what the numbers of students at Pomona versus Ray were, just going forward. I know that we have you for a very short amount of time, so I just think that would be really helpful.
Jeff's looking behind him.
Somebody else, yes. Maybe, yes, Ms. Galey can help with that. I also, I am glad that we have the SRO contract going forward. I would love to see the cities working together, and so, I think one of the things that, we have two different cities, we don't, but they serve our students come together. And so, if you have students who live in one city and go to school in a different city, I just think it makes sense to have more joint communication. And so, I would love if next year, I know we usually renew it around this time, if next year we could have both contracts together on the same day and have conversations together with us as kind of the mutual partner in doing training, because I know that's one of the things we've talked through is making sure that our SROs are trained in the same way in both cities. And I noticed actually one thing for the Newport Beach SRO contract was there's a training amount, and it was capped at like $5,000, which to me seems a little low. So if we're going to be asking for training, it makes more sense not to limit it in that way. And I just wanted to also add to the, it was in the minutes, and I realized that I misspoke about the Estancia football scope and budget, not to add it to the, our official budget, but to add it to the next meeting to discuss that happening as soon as the theater is done, because the Estancia football team has been waiting for a very long time. They have a very dilapidated setup back there. And then I also just wanted to ask if we can share and continue. I talked about Avid at the last meeting, and it was awesome to see the International Bucklory at Parents come and speak. It would be great to have that continued articulation and conversation with Whittier Elementary. I know that was one of the main pieces that we've been trying to, that is an opportunity for Whittier and Enson and Newport Harbor students. And so, just I think making sure that all elementary parents at Whittier and specifically know about the IB program and that the language piece is key to it, and that that is an option for them before they perhaps get locked into Avid, which also has its own kind of narrow, rigid class structure of classes that you have to take. And I just, lastly, want to say thank you so, so much for all of the extra work that was done to ensure that summer school started well, that families felt supported. I know that it was a really, really heavy lift, and we had our school community facilitators working extra hours, and I just thank you so much to our Transportation Department and Todd and our, our, to provide food and cafeteria needs for so many of our students. So I just thank you for those who trained our front office staff. It was, it was a heavy lift, so thank you so, so much.
Yeah, we certainly don't shut down in summer. So, as trustee Pearson mentioned earlier, we went to visit the Anderson site, which is absolutely spectacular at the, the potential of what the school's going to be like once it's all done. I'm just so excited for the community at Anderson with what they're going to get, really, almost a new school, so very exciting. And the SRO contract, very excited that we are going on a fifth day, on a, using a fifth day, because there's someone in this room who was part of the decision-making and feedback about trying to step up the security of our SR, on campus, and the SRO contract being elevated would be one of those, one of those kind of check the boxes. So, safety is very important at our campuses, and so is our relationship with our police departments, Costa Mesa and Newport, so that's wonderful. I just wanted to celebrate Newport Mesa. We've launched a summer, summer program, and we're going to just keep working, doing what we do best, which is take care of our kids, educate, elevate, and inspire. Thank you.
Carol with the branding at the end. Good job.
All right. I just want to say, thank you also for all the summer construction. I've seen it everywhere. Definitely even got the, the route under the favorite street I drive down, it got solved. But thank you so much for everything that's going on. It's, it's not a small feat. And with that, I want to close in recognition of our favorite colleagues here that are retiring, but all of our other colleagues that are retiring. And by the time we have a next meeting in July, we'll have fresh faces sitting here at the corner, which will be sad and exciting at the same time.
And a full board.
And a full board, yes. It'll be an exciting meeting. All right, well, thank you, everyone, and we are closing the meeting at eight nineteen.